Call up with me, Lord. We've already had indication tonight that our next thing on the agenda would be Ms. Kirk, and I'd like to say, get our sentencing, please. Ms. Kirk.
I have presented to you the second draft of the budget based on the information that was discussed last Friday with the department heads agreeing to the recommendations that were previously been presented to council. We did have some department heads that went above and beyond what was already recommended. Based on that information, this draft not only includes budget adjustments, but also the adjustment for the delay of the hiring of the group management position and $55,000 increase in revenue for the sale of the pit assets. We had originally budgeted five, and I discussed with Mr. Wilson, the estimates for the sale, and on the conservative side, we agreed to a two-year, $60,000.
As on sale of patrol cars and so forth?
That's all the equipment sales to auction, he'll hold probably in October. With the new budget, the first draft of the budget was possibly 22.2 million. The second draft that's presented is 21.8 million. To balance the budget, we have utilized 100% of the six-mill levy, which is one million and $40,000. It includes the 693,000 for the four mills of capital improvement, 820,000 for local auction sales tax, and this would leave a balance of $528,542 that would need to come from reserves to balance the budget.
Ms. Kirk, will you say the number again, please? Five twenty-eight?
Five hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars.
Thank you.
The budget does include that four-mill tax for capital equipment, and of that, we paid the lease payment, and that would leave 284,302 dollars to be distributed among the departments for their capital equates. We did not make any adjustments to even the assistance or enterprise fund, their fund balance.
You can't, uh, for my, and I know that we could revenue bring back, but I think what's been done in the last couple of weeks, certainly the government heads, the current board of directors, the 990,000, so many people in between to talk about here, if I could have, so that's some progress. I think, uh, what I've seen, talking to department head, I think they were cuts made or adjustments made or a manual, you know, a final thousand dollars. Twenty-one million, that's general funds, that's, 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 that's the whole thing.
General funds.
Whole entire budget was 27 or so, 26, 27, against five, the whole line, so it's perfect, and it's kind of very, general fund, yeah, the page, or nine hundred, all kinds of things. I think thirty, uh, top of our, go by any of that, all things being equal, that, that gets the fund balance required, based on lead numbers, that was less than eight dollars. I think, as Kirk points out, you know, we're better off now than we were last year, trying to, trying to spur this process. I think, any questions to that, Scotty? I think what she's done is, we've taken it, Dr. Gadsden, I mean, the devil talked about, you know, it hasn't been approved yet, again, but, uh, a couple things. What we'd like to do, we'd be long, you know, we'd be in time to need to, or whatever, try to get a sentence on second week, or two weeks, that gives time to add by fifteen-day notice, get third reading, probably by, by second reading, to be, to end, to be as much, give it to our person, or, you know, you, but.
Of that 528,000 dollars additional funding from fund balance reserve, over 200,000 of that is for insurance, that, uh, increase in insurance.
That's, that's part of the, of the funding, I think, uh, critical. Again, I pointed out one time, you know, before the, before the justice way, she talked about, again, on, on, on the quest side, not only it, on the pickup side, we were, uh, I think the quest last, sort of like, had a million dollars more this year, last year, is that, is that correct? A hundred thousand dollars left was from the, one, basically, from solicitor office, and 200,000 dollars left was for required, unwanted insurance, so that really was netted about 200,000 dollars, take those things out, and again, I think, they are part of the, of the fund. I think the requests were pretty well aligned with what, you know, what's been done in the past, and I think, again, the fact that, uh, there were 400, who took the 10,000 dollars, so it's been, it's been a little more, I guess.
Forty-four thousand is what they come to.
Forty-four thousand, yeah. That's what's been, again, hasn't been approved yet, uh, that's what's been at least recommended for, for, for the budget for.
Well, what page is the revenue on? I know I, I saw it in the big book, is it in this small one you just gave to? I'd like to scroll that real quick, for the benefit of, like, steer here, show them where the revenue comes from, and can't, just count it real quick. What page?
Revenue.
Page 13, Ms. Kirk.
Instead of going with various, let's go with the detail. Page thirteen.
Is this in the R?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. The revenue that's on page thirteen is the general property tax that is collected for, specifically, the general fund, all real property, vehicles, and fellos, that is designated to the general fund. On page fourteen are the additional tax revenues, which includes the four mills for capital improvement, 29% of local auction sales tax, and the six mills that we currently have there for debt, uh, deficit reduction are reserves now. And those are basically our tax revenues. On page fifteen, we have our license and permits, most of this is generated by building inspection permit department, and our utility franchise fees for cable company. Our intergovernmental revenue is any revenue that is exchanged between any type of government, whether it's state, local, or federal government, and has to be reported in this particular area. The majority of the intergovernmental revenue comes from the local government fund, that comes from the state South Carolina. That fund has been cut a million dollars in the past five years, past five years.
See, this, on page fifteen, the 2.6 million dollars, that is, I think, the second biggest source of income, and has, that's, that's property tax, that, that, that's a pretty significant number for, that, that, that became a federal fund, where we, both, they were asking.
These are all of our agreements with, like, municipal governments, the furnished communications, um, veterans officer that we share with Greenwood, our, our agreement is here, is any reimbursements we get from the state, or any type of grant, any federal grant money that we receive, any commerce movement they receive. And those can be on page sixteen. Then on page seventeen, this is actually our charge for services.
On page, uh, fifteen, I had that margin, so veteran service, I guess that veteran service officer, in fifteen, 63,000, this year it's 37,000, what's the difference in that?
Fifteen, uh...
What, it was going to share, or that's the point?
I think that car was included, part of that car was included in that, too.
That was?
Where we had the joint agreement to buy the vehicle.
With Greenwood.
Mm-hmm. Some of that's in there, and I think the budget figure for last year may have been overstated due to, uh, a transaction that kind of overlapped fiscal year. That's one of those cases where sometimes we'll be paid at the end of the year, by the end of the year, sometimes we have to go back and approve for the end of the year. So I think a combination between our agreement with, oh, the vehicle, of them paying us for part of the vehicle, and, uh, that one payment that didn't last, I think that threw last year's number off. This year's number came straight from the contract.
Okay. So they are paying, they share?
Yes, sir.
One other question, I'm gonna have to page my main speaker. Ms. Wilson, just below that DHEC numbers, 2015 budget was 31,000, 2013 actual was 30,000. Year-to-date for us is showing at zero, we're projecting, are those some overstated numbers, 30, 31 as well?
The 30, the 30 is an actual number, that's from the audit.
Okay.
And we probably budgeted 31 based on what we had received in the prior year.
I guess what's concerning to me is, here we are, you know, out of January 31st, and we're setting on zero, so it's, you know...
I think that's one of those instances where they may pay once a year, and it's usually towards the end of the year.
And that would make sense, it's just coffee fund, when I was looking at, you know.
And what we normally do in these circumstances is look at what we received in the prior year and try to budget based on what we have received in the prior year.
And that would make most better sense, 2014 actual, kind of levels of that. Thank you.
On page seventeen, the detention center commissary makes its money.
Well, the detention center normally does not bring in as much money as what they did last year. They had, they found last year that that had been a, an issue with someone in the commissary, running the commissary, and so there was some money that was kind of over and above what we normally get, but we did not actually make money off the commissary, 'cause all the funds from the commissary and the telephone have to go into a special inmate fund, that can only be spent on inmate welfare. So we can't just put it in the general fund. If you, if you could notice, probably, the commissary and the phone commission, the money that's budgeted is offset by the amount we put in inmate welfare, so it's zero as far as this budget goes. But we have to account for it in the budget based on GAAP guidelines.
Where is, uh, the FELA listed, we're saying this year, how much FELA fund do we get?
The FELA that's designated to the operator, is on the first page.
Is it listed in revenue here?
Yes, sir, on, on page thirteen.
Thirteen?
Mm, yes, sir. You'll see, third from the bottom is the FELA fund that's designated to the operator.
So there's 1,400,000 received FELA fund. Is that what I'm seeing?
Well, the 1.4 is what we recommend for next year. So far, at the end of January, we received 1.2.
Does that go up anywhere?
It can possibly go up.
Does anybody got any questions about the revenue? Again, on...
Yeah, I have one. On page sixteen, Owen's Park Water and Sewer, in fourteen, it was 541.174, nothing in other years except fifty, that is 104,000, I think, that day.
This is grant money that's received from the cost, commerce, from the state of South Carolina, it's grant money, and we have to report it in the financial statements, and we don't know at this point whether or not we're gonna receive any grant money, so therefore we can't budget for it.
But that could go into general fund, though.
It goes into general fund, or to the GAAP guidelines.
Says general fund, the revenue detail schedule.
It was added, it's added to the general fund due to the, the GAAP guidelines that we have to follow, the general accounting, executive accounting principles, we have to report it in the general fund.
So, how do we get those grants, the whole line, is that coming out of...
I don't know if I have a... Okay, for the, uh, city money that we developed, it's part of it, maybe, uh, like, for, for some of that is, uh, two parts to that, you know, one would be park commerce grants, that we use, that, you know, we got 3 million dollars, they have 4 million dollars for the general code, and then the county receives, being developed on occasion, competitive grants, group, well, thanks for park commerce, and, and, and that's, 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 that's one of the things.
And I guess I had in my mind that was reserved out of the general fund, of her development, so...
In the past, it's been reported in the audit with, uh, previous auditors, with non-budgeted revenue and non-budgeted expenses, and it usually washes out unless you overlap fiscal year and have a receivable from the department commerce, and so it hasn't been included in the budget in part of it. Now, uh, our new auditor stands for the GAAP guidelines, it needs to be in the budget section, it has to be approved from budget.
Those things sporadic, you never have to come out of here, so, the park commerce rent, it's quite specific, they have a few after others, one, usually what we've done on the community development side of it is, fund a little money through water, sewer water, sewer price, also depends on something.
And that's what I was thinking, it was ever, Dr. Lai, water, so...
Go out with it, benefit from some of that, and that's another reason, a couple of things.
And we have had a discussion with the auditors about moving those to their own separate funds, since we, we really have no control over that money, we're just kind of like to pass through for the money, and I think in this particular fiscal year, the reason you'll see there's nothing budgeted here at all is, we are looking at, if we get any grants, that's what we're gonna do, is we're gonna set up separate funds to account for those grants outside of the operating fund.
And that's what you're doing, and that's, is that what you're showing, numbers a little clean?
Ms. Chair, may I ask a few questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Kirk, in our budget last year, or this current year, when we adopted it, we, if my, this is the one, this is not the latest draft I'm aware of, but we said we approved going into the fund balance to balance the budget at, at one time, it was 611,185 dollars. I don't know what the final number was. Where are we this year in terms of overall revenues, less expenses? And could we have that at the next meeting?
I will furnish that at the next meeting.
And the second question I have is, by ordinance, we are to receive quarterly reports on the reserves, six mills. I would like to see where we are with that in terms of over the last, for sure, this council needs to see where it is in terms of the years. I know it's fiscal year-wise, but we have carried forward, too. I guess what I'm asking is, where are we with, how far have we had to go into the fund balance for this year? Have we cut out the budget amount for revenue in terms of the six mills that have come in? If so, what is it?
All the six mills have not come in, not what we budgeted, and others that, they, we're not far off, but we haven't hit budget number yet.
Um, and that's what I have from the treasury as well, at...
We have not...
1,002,000.
We have not spent everything in expenditure yet, that was budgeted.
I guess what I'm saying is, we, if we, uh, over, if we have more revenue coming in and we spend less, we may not be as bad in shape as we think we are, is what I'm trying to say. But there's a lot of ifs to go into that, I don't know.
And a lot of that continuing issue comes in with the fact of the difference in how... We have two different accounting systems. We have Treasury's office, and we have ours. Now, we funnel everything from theirs into ours on a, a daily basis. However, at the end of the year, Treasury's office is operating on a cash basis, we're operating on an accrual basis, so we have to take their cash receipts, come up with receivables, and post that revenue into our books, so we never have a true revenue figure until after June 30.
Nor will you have a true expenditure until after June 30, when the June bills are paid, correct?
Correct, we do accruals there.
And I understand that, but we're in month 11, and we should have been paying bills through month 10 for the fiscal year, so we should have a pretty good indication where we are with two, two months remaining.
We have not hit our goal in revenue budget-wise, and we have not expended everything that we have yet budgeted. Now, the exact number, I don't know, but I, I relate to that today, and I do apologize for not having that with, with two y'all already, but with my family situation, I have a headache, but I'll give that to you for the next thing.
And I understand that. Where, where do you believe that we are in terms of the fund balance of the reserves? That should be a replenishing account, at least in my opinion.
Well, the six mills automatically go there.
Correct. And if we spend a million, I'm gonna use whole numbers, if we spend a million, we collect a million, then the balance, overall balance should not be there.
Right.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm, Ms. Chair.
Would it not be, uh, since we've got the font of using this 100% of this six-mill tax, they would go ahead and put it in the general fund, instead of having to have an ordinance every year to use it?
It's been recommended to do that by, by our fund, folks, probably be involved in that, we'd have to, you know, get them, and they, they quit, what I was told was, as long as it's being used as the, you know, as the general fund of the county, it's been that whole lot there, it probably would be, you know, why it's changed that, to just put it as part of the general fund. You know, I, I don't think, can't increase the, uh, just kept with this, can't increase county ordinary, I'm pretty, but the fact that these funds are used, they, they, they could be, you know, they're no longer reserves, they, they basically operate, operate less than, you know, that's all coming out of there.
It's not a new tax, I mean, it's, it's just basically just saying it's general fund money.
Yeah, it's been, it's been used that way.
Anybody on council have objection to doing that?
I'm looking at the reserve, 'cause that would have some effect on our rates.
We, we, don't, don't do the thing, I think with Dr. Chris, about that six mill, come in and go out, basically, I'm saying, the reserves that, that, that we maintain are about, in a little, little, about 80,000 dollars, is that right? For June 30 of last year, so that's what, you know, and that, that's what's been coming down, of course, the cost of having to go into for whatever number you have, like 60,000 dollars, or 50,000 dollars, or whatever, and I think the, that's the part we're talking about, around the income, or expense, people, income, income on time, but, but the six mills, was that historically about the county that operated, that's, in the way we're here for, and I think that, that's what, that's what it came from, and then the cost of other issues, that, 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 that rolled into the, uh, you know, general work, living camp, that, we still have pretty healthy reserves, you know, based on, uh, what is it, 25% of the operating, something like that, so, you know, if our operating is 27 million dollars, that 8 million dollars in reserve, that's still pretty good number, but, but that number, if it comes down, it's very hard to replenish that, because, because it's basically every, 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 it's on the first page, every fund we have, actually, and, and, and the budget, you know, all that depends.
I just feel like we ought to just go ahead and put it in the general fund, and say it, and I'd like to have the opinion of the rest of the council.
I'd like to know, do, look at how we can do that legally, because of the way it's set up.
I think the ordinance would be great, I think, if it was done there, it's hard, I mean, if you have to have to look at it, it's not about having to, you know, if I agree with the chair, it doesn't make a lot of sense, go through that thing every year, you know, you know where you're going. But that's, that's something to look at.
I tell you what, if we spend that six mills, it's a certain curve, then, you heard about bond ratings, right?
Well, it hurts the bond rating, if, if the, uh, the eight million gets below, and it's, it's, it's a moving number, you know, some say 30%, some say 25%, you know, you, what, what the bond firm says is, that any cloak up needs to, needs to keep, at least 25% of total budget is reserved, so, on a budget of 26, 27 million dollars, we, we gotta, that means that we got below 6 million dollars, that's, that's when it hurts, that's when it hurts the bond rating, and that, that's why I think, what this whole process started, we'll try to avoid as much as possible, going into them, going into the reserves, the budget, you know, that number, again, the thing on this page, we've got a big slide, that number, two weeks ago, we almost missed dollars, it was down to about 528, so, that, that's positive, we try to keep, try to keep as much as possible, that's what I would, I would, I would look at. County, I bet bond ratings are heavy.
But it's by that six mills, and we can't keep spending more money than we're taking in.
Well...
And bill reserve, what's the taxpayer, we'll just raise it up to 10, 15, we don't need one hell of a big reserve, but that's not...
But that's not the way it was going to go.
We don't, we don't.
A lot of it.
You know, like, a lot of suggestions, you know. The point is, is six mil put in place ten, twelve years ago, we tried to offset that. And that, and that's, that's what, that's what it did. Basically, we're trying to hit some reserves back into, you know, back into the, one time, a couple of years ago, we had ten, ten, eleven million dollars, you know, in, in that fund, and that's down to about eight million. And that's what I'm saying, if, if, if that number comes down, because we had used to think like this, if that number comes down, then the bond rating comes out too.
Right.
Because that's my point, that, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid. Now, you know, the eight million dollars, if, if that's the correct number, it's, it's your discretion, that, that, you know, you can't, you know, council needs a budget. A portion of that, files to document, then that, that's within your right to do that. But we don't have the ability anymore to, to, to recruit that unless, unless, other point, that, you know, others get through. And, you know, and, and that will go up, the, the, you know, the building raise back, it's just about nil, about you do it.
I know some of the experts have said, each man, woman, child, everybody that lives in the United States. Take the national debt, it costs sixty thousand dollars for each man, woman, and child, that's in the United States now. It was a terrible debt, and we owe it to other countries, and then we keep spending more than we got here to. Charity begins at home, so.
But, but I. We'll say management, preserve, the candidates, and other things have given the candidates the best recovery they've ever had. I think we're, we're, we're double A's, about, or maybe, maybe one step below double A. Which is the best we'll ever do, we'll, we'll never be triple A across society, county, county, Greenwood, Charleston, places like that, we're gonna be triple A. We'll definitely be that from here, because of size and tax.
Had we used this six mil to balance the budget for the last three years, we count this year. Ever bit of the use, general fund. And I don't see where you can, don't be able to use it in, in, or anything else. But.
I've always grew.
Would you check into that, Mr. Cruz?
Yes, sir.
And then we're putting four counties, they were counting on that one.
He said, Mr. Chairman, maybe these past three years?
I believe it's, how many years, ladies, we have to use all that six mils from the general fund? It's been on about ten years.
We're doing a quarter.
How come they haven't, they've been to reserves?
But really, if it hadn't been for that six mil, when we went through the, the first cutback, the local government fund, this candidate would have been in the heck with it.
Yeah, it's been two years, yeah.
If we hadn't had that six mils used all back. We put that in effect, that was put in effect before the Act Three Eighty-Eight, that means the work. And, uh, right after that was put in effect, Act Three Eighty-Eight, that means let your agents have. But we used it all the last three years.
We've used a portion of them. I don't think we've, our, we've used a portion.
I think I'm on off. If anybody had got, had got any objections, last time we had a meeting, we got down finance director. And, uh, you don't go and do each department. I'd like to fall back on that and just, if you can, go through it as quickly as possible, but if we got questions, surely ask them. And, uh, and if we have time, we might, maybe get on the capital spending period. At least it's got this, on page fifty-nine, start on page ninety. I'd like to get through the capital spending period, buying anything, get through them all, look at everything, and then go back to some recommendations about, we haven't got a whole lot of money left, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, what I see, capital spending period, is that right, Lisa?
Two hundred and eighty-three is what we have left, that is a full mil.
Yeah, that's like the lease payments, not.
Yes.
So, uh, if you would go back to the, I mark my book on the finance director. And we got her in front of us. We'll review her department next. And we had some questions, Lisa made in the back where we had, uh, two different pages in, in the book, and some pages had some different figures on them. Some of them had first draft, and some of them had final draft.
Yeah, some of them, they get changed, there are three places you have to change that.
Yeah.
Every bit of this, though, was first draft.
Was anybody got any questions from finance department?
How many employees are in that department, full time and part time?
Three.
And it's not increased over the last couple of years. Didn't we, did we move someone into that department or out of that department into HR, is that correct?
We did, when payroll moved into HR, because my company didn't have four employees.
That's what I thought.
When was the last time the, uh, office supplies, you know, shop those around, for a vendor, for those, every, every so often?
We got the majority of our office supplies from our own supply, which is after on state contract.
On that same note, looking at policies, did we move a few buildings? Or you may know this, wasn't there a payroll going into that building? Well, that's helpful, that's indeed, the policies, of course.
Yeah, I know it's not a budget item at this point, because it's really not gonna make, I don't think it's a way of working. Put one in the, uh, core house, you know, in the, in the, whatever, mag, or whatever, that. But we got into a situation where people, there's a need, that's what led us to this. You sort of look at that, they would, uh, the veteran area runs like, like we adapted something, but I, I persist the way of running something.
I thought, I just, I, I thought there was, I'm, I'm, you know. You know, my thought was, we have a lot of folks running back and forth to the office of various departments, and, you know. So, I'm not saying, yeah, so, thank you.
By some line, I'd say different in yours, but, uh, what you got this year is copier maintenance, and copier leases.
Does the, when we move to the new building, since our building shares one copier, then we'll have to have one up on the second floor, so. I hope really I will put in my budget. And it's nothing but bills and questions.
Has anybody got any other questions, Mr. Lisa?
We got one more question, Lisa, is the, the overtime, um, is it built into salaries or?
We have no overtime.
Yeah, this must be, uh, two employees, it's just, it's two hundred and fifty-six dollars, forty-six cents, and it's showing in the finance department.
That's the comp time.
It's comp, yeah.
Yeah, that's another issue is here with the comp time versus overtime. A lot of people like to stake out, if they work over that, just take out the regular time, and that's what comp time is.
Yeah, and that's basically.
You don't have to pay overtime.
But we record it. But because we were scheduled by our staff to record it, because it's getting the eligibility. Uh, my staff mainly gets, uh, comp time during, set off that season, where we're having to look at thousands and thousands and thousands of accounts, I'm talking about everyday duties.
Do you allow your employees to work from home and count those hours as real time work?
Sometimes not, it's our corporate situation.
I will say to my mouth, we don't have a policy to work from home, and I'm, I'm not in favor of that, because of that, I think we need that, we need that, but again, it's not a budget item, yes, sir.
But the only overtime will be pleased off through, via D O S.
Now, one one?
Do we, do we, you'll pick it overtime?
Sir?
You'll pick it overtime?
Do I get overtime?
Yeah. Pay them overtime?
My dispatcher's, yes, sir.
That's, that's based on that, and we talked about that, that President Sanders act, if they're over, certain lack of operation, if they're over forty every time, that's, that's where the bulk of it comes from.
I think the, this, well, that would be jumping, jumping around, but, yeah.
And maybe, maybe I should have some awareness of that, but ninety-five percent of, 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 a large portion of what the full time pay, those, those emergency service people, federal government says you have to pay overtime. That, that was, that, and all of them case, but we, we give that.
It, it's tricky, because I, I can see, as a, as a business person, I really think about the, the EMS side as being the, um. You know, it, it's tough, I understand, but that's our biggest overtime, I understand it's built in too, so, um, but I, I really like to look at our options there to, you know, explore what we can do there, so.
All right, nobody got any more questions from Lisa, we're good. Next, which is the health department, I, I don't even reckon I have that one.
What were you, that, can you? Can you find the office space with the agents there, out, out, the, uh, they get this bill, I think, behind Chamber Commerce, right behind Oxford.
Yeah.
And, uh, what we, basically, face the telephone service, that, that, that's a bulk.
Is that the state mandated department too? How many employees, if we can't have many employees, unless you copy of these or telephone?
They've got, uh, probably, uh, they have this, thirty thousand, they often have a, okay.
It's not thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand, forty-three cents a month, they, they got, they got half, yeah, that's what I have. And, uh, that's one of those, the, the, they offer forty, but the candidates require, provide, and they play to operate on hand and, and help. And they, and they, you know, their, their jobs, work, learn, and social, you know, various things they do. A few, a few years ago, they, they, they did move far their by home, from Greenwood, to, 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 to.
Did you, did you get any questions?
Yes, sir. Do we know, Tom, is that, that's what, I'm looking at twelve thousand five hundred for funds, for telephones, is that meant for cell phones and lane lines, or?
Lane line.
Lane, all lane lines, okay, wow, how many lane lines do we have here, sir?
Like. It, it's a, you know, it's, it's a, that, that would be longest service, and so. I think they're twenty-five, thirty, forty, I don't know.
We don't, we don't have them cell phones, we're not paying for their cell phone service?
No, no. We, we, we really play for that, so, I don't know.
That's, that's what D R T C?
No, that would be, uh, right.
A T T.
Yeah, A T T is in the front.
Their lane lines are with, or, or, okay.
And that, that's all system too, we have to buy, you know, you know, you know what, what about that, we had to buy, you know.
Probably, there's no idea, or something, or.
Oh, we take the system, we, we had, that, that.
I'll, I'll see, but let's get together on that, see if we can find out.
Anybody have any more questions about the test? Inspection permit. I would love to see what his department had, if we hadn't had him, you would bet, then, then they, they did pretty good, eh?
How many employees are in that department? Full timers. And you got, you got that anyway?
That's six, six or seven?
See, eight, eight million inspectors.
Okay, so you got nineteen, eleven, probably twelve. You got eight inspectors, two up front.
What nine?
Eight, nine, and four. I'm, I'm looking at that overtime, I say I hope that's a L.
I don't see, oh, two of them. Who are you?
I'm the inspection, you don't see?
Sowers, Sally.
Part-time Sally, okay. But I'm still, that's the one I'm looking at. Would have been that? That's a lot of, would have been. That's over, would that have been, uh? Lisa?
They've had to have somebody to fill in during that time.
No, they had one way out, and he replaced her or something. But he was fired.
Let us look at that number, I, I can't recall, that's what, what, what.
I think David got something to say.
I can add to that question. That was clerical error in payroll, when they moved from part-time to full-time, that was not affected in salary account. That's why that's important, thank you.
Didn't, didn't Keith move over, he had some knee surgery, he was working completely out of that department, uh, buyer.
Yeah.
Yeah. And all of that, but it's building, building, because I know he was over there for a couple of months for knee surgery, heel surgery, he had some, some kind of medical issues, he wasn't alive, he couldn't get out of the tree.
A lot of what he, and I know, a lot of what he ended up doing is, uh, the African, for, for, they were just about, he and he and one of the inspectors were just about, financial, that, again, that's, that's, that's what we're done, but, you know, it was what, what we tried to do, move it quite quickly and, you know, not, not delay it for weeks, weeks like some left in my, but. Again, that's, that's, that's correct.
I, I just didn't know if that was the camp, or something like that.
I think, you say, it was part-time, when we pulled down, that would, would reflect it.
Yes, sir, it was, um, I'm sorry, it was part-time.
So notice if you had a year, about a permit system or something. About, if we added last year, last budget year, has that been addressed in this budget? I know we did go to a tablet, a pan, Gary tablet, talk system.
I, I think that's that computer software, I think, sixty-seven hundred dollars of the budget, and then we're budgeting seventy-eight hundred.
For this year?
I think that's the maintenance, talking to his mayor, software. Daniel software.
Ball last year, I, I, I think that you're.
With the.
You got that included in that?
Yes, sir, send that seventy-eight hundred dollars. Other computer software maintenance, count number four for yesterday.
I carry forward thirty-seven thousand dollars. Am I interpreting that to mean that that department has almost spent three thousand of the forty thousand budget? He's requesting to carry, allow him to carry that balance forward.
For that list?
Yes, sir.
Probably, they, they have to get.
I believe what he's spent so far, she.
Before they do, they have to get, uh, they don't, they don't, they don't do it part for, they, they, for volunteer, that's what they're, they're, they're. They've done some.
Like what happened in Joanne?
Yeah.
So, main factory, home slash house, and they, they, they've done a pretty good job, old trailer, they, 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 they box them. They down some homes too.
Yeah, but, but the, the tactic they take here, they don't, they don't go in the man, they, they, they get home commission, that, that's, that's probably part of the, uh, part of that, that one planning mission got into a while back, that, 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 I think they take it back, that's, that's, I think, that's what they're doing now. And, uh, they try to do two or three times in a row, just for that one. And it's hard, it's hard sometimes, we can move on your planning process, it's hard to even plan that, so, they try to make sure that, 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 they try to be careful with that.
They've already got a project for that, for. They've already got a project for that, for thousands.
As of April sixteen, they have already spent thirty thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars this year.
In letter dated March, I think, requesting, really having from me to carry over over seven thousand. Says from current and prior year, so they must have been carrying forward now, I don't know.
I think, I think they. But ten thousand.
Okay.
But I I see that's probably like they just, friend check out now.
Yeah.
But again, they do it on, they don't go in and take that across those right here.
And what about the five thousand dollars for uniforms, there was zero dollars in the last three years. I assume they need new uniforms, is that right?
They have never had a uniform account. They have always bought their uniforms out of one of the other accounts, either the training account or the office supply account, so we broke that out this year. And made them a uniform account and just kind of broke up their budget money based on what they've seen in the past and to better a lot. Get a better picture of what they've got in their department. And according to their fund balance reserves, they do not have any fund balance reserves from the prior year.
Anybody got any more questions about Inspector Berman? I would give it up. Number of employees, please.
Eleven, full-time eleven, part-time. Being full-time, but. And then full-time, total. Trying to do the lower.
What was risen for her, uh, salary, dropping three ninety-seven, three twenty-six? I think I asked that before, I can't remember.
Did she eliminate a couple of part-time positions in that?
She actually had a full-time position and the person left and she created new part-time positions out of that position.
So that's part of the budget in.
It was probably, on this one, probably a good idea, if this policy up here, this 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 is pretty complicated, it's a hacker, with two facilities. New employer. We, I think we've done, there was a note, the department had fit in about tonight, we could fit the question. We like talked earlier, we're going to get rid of, I mean, after. That seven fifty a month, you recall, us myself here about to use that, and that that money comes into the first office that goes directly to their operating center, so that, that's, that's.
How much, they're paying seven hundred fifty a month?
That, they they didn't make that come, that would come to finance office, which we can handle, because it goes directly to their operating.
So you want to get her here, we can't just talk about David here. Anybody got any more questions? We get her here. Our next magistrate. Let's get him here, too. Did all. Everybody read your file, your reports you just got. Because there's going to be a, another unfunded mandate by the magistrate. And circus list or what, what is that earning?
Well, literally, very bad.
They become demand, we give them eleven percent pay raise next year.
Eleven percent.
Plus benefits. That's going through, it hasn't been passed yet, it's going through. Well, we added a position to the magistrate department last year, and he said it would pay for it, so I'd like to know if that happens.
Probably get up here, uh. Magistrate pay is set by, by law. What it is for, back, some down, back. Based on, we got, what, two full lines, two three-four guns, is that right? I think, uh, about two full time, two three-four. Whole lady do, one door, lost back to circuit, uh, and burn that, I had anything in that picture. Three on my way out of the, uh. Hill Press Square and the, uh, quarter, three. One time they had one city, that that magistrate was up here. Custody of Bill, getting them out.
What are we doing about one of the detention centers, is that, like, sending one out there?
Yes, sir, we get, the magistrate from Hill Press Square comes out twice a day.
We still can't do that by video, or they don't use it?
Video.
We spent some good money on video, and we got it all worked out, they still don't give it.
Well, they don't.
No, they get the video from inmates in jail, from magistrate out there, they don't.
But what's the problem, they don't do it for a motive?
They don't want to use the one at Hill Press Square, it's there, to my understanding, and maybe somebody can speak to where it may. The only one they were using is the one at the, at the detention center. They sit in the courtroom, use the video, we have the inmate back in the jail, and on bottom. They have the same capabilities from Hill Press Square.
Like I say, myself, a drive, if required.
Want to get magistrate, then they have the rest of them for you, it's all, like, you mentioned.
Yes.
I think there's a, this one, I think the, maybe a different, different file, that's two, that 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 I think they got to get all that.
So we want to add Mr. Live to come in?
Yes.
So that's live room, the magistrate.
I'll keep that computer here that he has.
Right.
He asked for some computers. That's his, that's his.
Want to take that. Do we say, say?
That's probably.
This is.
Yeah, seven four one hundred, pay thirty-five, probably, and a thousand dollars.
Here are a couple of finishes. So the here are a thousand pieces, we guess the software.
I think that may.
They don't put video.
They don't put video, they don't work on, I don't know what those are.
Hey, I'm just saying. I guess they don't, they don't listen here, like, how many computers there are, or something.
That you may be right.
I assume that.
I I'd like to know.
Yeah, it's split each time. Orson's each time.
That software we've already got in place.
Got it loaded on, last.
Court was switched.
What's the equipment maintenance, is that what you're asking?
Equipment maintenance is the, um, core software from the state. It's, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars between, it's split between him and the perp corps.
You have to play that, with the management, right, what we call, what we all have to go here. You have one in fund, two here, one in Grayville. That kind of, what, they're all over here.
One's not, we still have one in Grayville.
One in Grayville's not, not, they're all over here.
So the state forces us to have the magistrates and then buy the, the software from them, it's from the state as well.
Unfortunately, the plan is very good, I mean, the idea, I think, you know, if you got a case from a county, you could, you know, you could, you might have some of that, but we got that.
Single, yeah.
And the whole court got playing, like. It's got a, it's got a paper, so that, that, you pay a hundred dollar fine, always got to push a button, and give yourself all the money. Uh, to every, there's about fifteen or twenty different hands to get a part of that money. Kind of gets about less than ten or something.
That is surprising.
I did think. But then if you question, we ask like, why have to do it, then they probably play for.
Sweet about that all the year. If I asked you any question, you give that level of change, right, even benefits.
I think we may need the sheriff's department to step in on all this, this is. All these force mandates, I mean, it.
Leave that sheriff, whatever.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
We'll ask Mr. Live to come in and address this. All right, Park Recreation. Number of employees?
Three.
Three.
He has some part-time, did he not have his part-time?
He had it part-time last year.
I thought he had seasonal, part-time.
Yes, sir, he had a part-time, but he was, he transitioned to full-time position last year.
He was some inmate labor, I think, or, or, or whole.
Two.
That part guy that did the maintenance, some lawnmower, some board, so, you know. I know Andy said when something tore up, he didn't care, downtown, get it repaired, get it repaired, and sell. This is.
This is Howard, two percent here, for a lot of towns, people have rest, landfills. I think, what, you don't put, don't put a lot of money into that, I think, they, they, they use pretty well.
Vehicle maintenance, some there, is there, you've seen the variants there, what's, what's going on?
We adjusted the vehicle maintenance and the vehicle supply accounts this year to better reflect. Actual supplies and actual maintenance, and the pads. They would be like, go to Valvoline and throw it into vehicle supplies instead of vehicle maintenance, and we're trying to get all of our contractual services in certain areas and all of our supplies in certain areas for sales tax purposes. So it's just a, a, a reclass of how we're trying to better account for where the, the bills are actually being taken.
I know this isn't time to talk about spending additional money, but I'll just add this comment. As I go, as I travel around the state and go to these ball tournaments, it amazes me how much revenue other counties are benefiting. From these tournaments and the amount of people who are staying in hotels and eating in restaurants. I know now it's not time for this county to try to build a heritage park or something like, uh, the ones in Duncan. Uh, but it amazes me how much money is spent every single weekend.
I think so, they aren't done some of that, I guess, it's not, you know, what they've done out here on the east side town. They don't get, they're not here, they put a lot of money away there.
Well, the parks I've been to are, you know, they're in Weston County, well, Weston County has money, Sparkville County, they have money. However, Sparkville went way over on budget on that market there, in the millions. And, um, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just telling you, we're missing a lot of revenue, um, in terms of tax revenue from accommodations and and restaurants, but.
You, you know, you talk to people that live in Gray Gordon, those places, you know, they, they play all essential building, it's happening wherever people, I think, are going, play where you, you know. People are going out to take advantage of.
The resources, all right. That's a, that's an example, I've got to add this, are the rich getting richer and the poor getting poorer?
Yes, they are. Very much, uh, see if it, that, that be poor. That be work, be working poor. You know, that be in poor, be working poor.
Look at the, uh, Ford Mill Park. That's something, Howard, different, let me, Ford, they, a lot of that. That most, a lot of money, Tim, in Oklahoma, pipeline, oil, for, 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 um, I think, whatever you can get, they, you know, I think, I think. That proves, we can, you know, give, give, I think, what I'm saying, that, that part of, you know, real, we all, I mean, you and like, every day, do, or?
Sir?
Ford Mill Park, and, and, don't you advise and open and closing that?
I was for a long time.
Okay.
The sheriff's offices are closing down.
You've been up there, that's a good, you know, event, what can you?
But we never have had a goal where we wanted to improve Park and Recreation for Lawrence County. Never have been something that we've been able to look at and had a desire to do, it's been always on the back burner, it's always just been.
But I think we have the right person, boys, to help with that, and we can just come up with that goal, and talk about, and that fun. I think he's showing that. There's one thing we probably look at, too, is my father, I guess, going through these, uh. Five hundred thousand dollar cuts that we put in, just like Parks and Recreation. He gave up, he gave around about, about ten, twelve thousand dollars.
After the cuts, it's done by one eighty-four, two forty-four.
That's my father, not going back to the schedule, seeing for each one of these parts where. Just about every department in the county is good, so. Any more questions for Parks and Recreation? Okay, we go to human resource. This is Mr. Parker. Mister Chairman, if I may go back to Parks and Recreation, for, for just for a minute, just, and I just don't know, accommodation taxes, spins. That's a significant increase, what, what, what's that due to, do they, I don't know.
What you have to spend back at what you're collecting?
Those are those funds that were set aside several years ago to improve the parks.
Yeah.
And. Council approval would take so much of the A tax money, the accumulation tax money, and Desi made the two parks erect for, like, I think, the joint park and the. To upgrade some of those parks by using some of that money.
Yeah, that's where that money comes from, comes from the accommodation staff.
I think, I think we're working on, on P R T program, now, that's been a while back.
We, you, P R T, we're doing.
I was curious.
We take that money instead of giving it back, all back to different towns for festivals and stuff. I think it's money worth spending, spending on a park. Okay, we go to human resource. But let me clarify about something, we are still appropriating money for the festivals as well, aren't we? Did we bring that? Yeah. That's what I thought.
Back to get ready to start a new program, it's always paid for years, I think, to get ready to start a new.
Round that.
Pay for it.
They appropriated to the ones that apply for it.
Right, and that committee determines, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we already approved it, that was here.
Right, the committee recommends it to camp.
About two months ago, we approved it, loads of it.
Right.
Alright, back to human resource. Mr. Dick, you got any problem? You want to address anything?
Number of employees?
Three.
Number of cell phones?
Uh, just see, see, cell phone work.
You're the only one, did you know, thank you. I just noticed that was, that was low, that would be about the ground, thank you.
Does that increase from thirteen to fourteen, that, that represents the employee move from finance to HR, is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, are you going to need a part-time employee or some time in the area of your region? You have an employee that's going to be out for this small amount of time?
She's part of the zone, she's trying to carry everyone, and that's all the money you're just coming from. And we, we train the parole for, to help ease up some of that, perhaps.
Ms. Parks, the advertising notices, what is that? What is that exactly?
That's ads we run, you want to add?
Is, I guess we're, are we having a lot of turnover, or, I mean?
Your problem with questioning the difference in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? We budgeted additionally for Mr. Hall's position because he was transitioning out at that time, as well as possibly anybody else's part-time position transitioning out, that's why the increase.
Certain positions for advertising, state 22, that's extraordinary. This will allow sometime for Sunday ad, you know, might run, you know, two by four, so that's, uh, most of what we do is local, yes, we, you know, and we use, uh, Association of Counties, we've got a website, you know, close up. You, you spend, for a while, odd, one ad, and then, you know, depends on what position it is, without, why, never got that, it's very, very low. That's what we're here to do.
Is there a chance with that, I guess, if we don't have to send out, you know, more ads than, um, for positions, then money to be returned to that?
What, what, what you spent, uh, how much you spent?
Yeah, 'cause this is at the one thirty-one, fifteen, we don't.
Do you have any more questions, either, from Mr. Dick? It may be alright for everybody to, we have consensus to stop there. Just give another vote to say, it's already eight o'clock. We'll ask the magistrate, maybe, to be at our next vote session in the library, later.
Okay, one, one thing before we go, on the, look at the first page, first, uh, before we do that, very well. Those incomes, matter, they're label-uplying, those things, that needs to be signed fast, quick, and, of course, camp agrees, uh, not been, like, I think, in the, 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 one of them, you know, people that files out, I'll, I'll, tomorrow, you know, to be up one more three minutes, so. Just need to kind of please, make, make sure we're all, I'm thinking, eight, ten, or, um, but again, I don't want, kind of, round, do need to play for you, like, like, do it today, but, just, we're kind of, we're not.
We would need that finload of certification, when we, when we have. We need to make this in, um, uh, well, I mean, it's given a lot, what we're trying to do on that is to keep two, two orders down.
I think, I think, I think, I put a note forward, and, you know, we need to play for you, but, play for you on, 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 do it on.
Yeah, I got to do it the same.
A lot, a lot, and that's what we need to do. We, we need to have a later decision on both of the, before they would be, yeah, pretty likely, I think, I'm glad that. I assume there'll, there'll be, we announce, let me see, I don't want to, probably decide, that, on that date.
Set up another page to be, Mr. Mayor.
It's not really playing that.
Paul, you, you been down there for a while?
Oh, I've been down, I've been down all this week. One night, good. Three, four, well, uh, I put you, uh.
Next week, I'm together by the town in the fall, and we'll come be back in, in, in Thursday. Thursday's my, my son's last place, probably, if y'all want to meet, that's fine, I won't be here. We need to have one for next week, and I believe that.
We do, yeah. What about, uh, you, you out next week?
Yeah, I'll be out next week, I'll be back in today, so, uh, Monday to twenty-sixth. What about, uh, the fourteenth? And I'll come as soon as I can get here. If y'all want to meet this week.
That's, oh, we, we.
Don't, don't hold it, don't, not hold it, because we want that.
We, we get the magistrate, they, uh, louder for.
You have to get a press account.
For a while, we, 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 we'll be here back, we can turn them on.
What about you, by the young, that has it?
We, we can send another, all the property have to come in here, if they will come, and, I, I think, you know, unless some of y'all feel like being seen. They would need to do is get one of that, talk to them, that, that's a chance, if you don't, you don't, what we're doing is, you know, uh, question all the, the chance, I would, uh, we, we can think and do that.
Okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. So it's the sheriff and Miki Kutt are here, other fellow, can we do the sheriff tonight?
Tonight? That's alright, we'll be, I mean. They're there twice.
I said we can leave the cut at all we have. My chair? Talking about the budget, they.
Yeah, I'm getting out.
You remember my chair? You remember the guy that got one extra person before I would get that? You remember that? I said you got one other person, you got one extra person. Yeah, they're, they're gone, that's the way you know.
One page, uh, correct. Twenty-four.
Alright, Sheriff, what do you like, Ross, to say no to first?
Let's start with number.
Seven or three, just a minute.
Alright, thanks to the sheriff's report. He might be here tonight, a lot.
That's why I brought Captain K.
How many employees, let's start there?
Sixty-six.
Full-time?
Full-time and two part-time.
Sixty-six. And that's our way to tell them you're there. And that'll decrease, isn't it? And that.
Well, we, uh, with two positions in the hospital, we, that was all, in the hospital, left, left.
That's that one position we got back, I reckon.
I don't think.
I have one, yeah.
I think it, it's a little better.
One of those kids, he's, he's, uh, I've been going down for a long time, I assume he's still there, young guy.
Yeah, when openings came up, they were.
Yeah, and that's what I was planning, it's better, because I don't think that was an increase in positions, I think the plan was to absorb those two guys, I thought, at those times, that it's just, it's mostly development, or. What is it, it's just, I thought.
We had seventy-three positions, and we had eighty less cars.
Very good.
That was detention center, too? Oh, detention center, they have fifty-one, they can't get a little bit, too.
Detention center has fifty-six, four, with two part-time.
Huh?
But FTE sheet, that, I was given from HR, had said we wanted two.
I'm saying it's got to be about, I'm, I'm, I'm saying about that minute, too.
We ain't got nothing, uh, for long.
If y'all saw the recommended cuts on this, y'all would probably have looked at all of that.
They have ordered. Totally got now, three nine, three three, all that.
You print that?
Three, nine, three, three, all that. So, it's out on. So then, that would be, yeah, um, some, uh.
Twenty thousand of it from vehicle maintenance.
I know Ricky expressed to me about his training, about his ammo. He expressed that, if you want to dress that, Ricky?
I mean, I prefer the captain, because I think he has some conversations with, uh, currently, our, our training budget is fifteen thousand, and, um, a lot of that, our training is where we get our ammo to qualify deputies every year, uh, our Taser cartridges. So it's our forty caliber, our shotguns, uh, some of our two, two, three rounds, as well as our Taser cartridges, come out of that, uh, for sixty-five plus and some other, uh, officers at detention center, even the seventy-something plus employees that, uh, that shoot once a year, you know, need one of those weapons. It gets to be costly, and, um, and our problem is that, is that with the state contract, uh, purchasing, we don't know when the ammo's will come in. So we may order it this August, but not get it till the next, next year. And that's what, uh, happened here in this budget this year, was a lot of that ammo was released and came in to us, you know, without, you know.
So we're not paying for it when we order it?
Yeah, we pay for it, yeah, I, I do, we, we get it, you know, and, of course, the vendor, that's always be coming in, they're coming in, uh, definitely.
I thought we took some training out of that one time before, because we all have a new committee, I want to show a new, little.
Our special operation, I think, yeah, I, I think that last year, I put in that, man?
I said you asked to take them out and put them in another training?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're in another one, and that's, again, that's the, they buy their specialized equipment, you know, that they use, you know, they, they do more, uh, handgun training and rifle training other than what the regular patrol. And in that increase that I requested for this year, uh, I know years passed, I requested to see if we could buy some, uh, patrol rifles for the remaining deputies that don't have the sword thing, and, you know, of course, you know, we're not able to get everything, but through a, along, of course, with surplus program, I was able to get, uh, twenty-six right now, and another thirty-eight is on, uh, I guess, reserved for us, uh, and the cost I bought there's twenty-six, the price for one rifle. So, uh, paying that twenty-six rifles for five hundred, eight hundred some dollars, you know, uh, so we did, uh, now just need to, the ammo, uh, ammo to train people, so we can get that for our patrol deputies and SROs.
The way, they, as far as, Paul, if you're asking, it's mandatory that you qualify at least once a year to maintain certification, and of course, the academy recommends it twice a year, but at least by state, state standards, that's, that's, it's at least once a year. You gotta take all these people down to range, which is rightfully so, you know, for somebody out there, to her, an innocent person.
What do you say, we just go ahead and leave it like it is, and, uh, she based it on the prior year budget? And I'm satisfied, you won't be the only one that might have to use some of this. We looking at a five hundred thousand dollar cut, but in reality, we know that we probably won't get all that. And if, if something comes up and you need that extra money, just let the council know. Or anything like that.
That would be fun, we, we prepared to do it, we need to, to have, we realize it's a tight year, and I've actually met with him from the last meeting, as far as trying to reduce the overtime as well, trying to get some people hump it out if we can, safely.
I want to say this before I forget, uh, I got a call from, uh, Mr. Little Strickland, and he said, uh, quick as they'll go, and he said that District Fifty-Five and District Fifty-Six realize the problem that the county is having right now for its services. They, they realize that we got to have services in the county, just like you got to have schools. So they have got together, and Mr. Pitts may know something about this, too, but they have got together and agreed to keep budgets the same as, as last year, and not increase anything. And the school says, is that right, Mr. Pitt?
Zero increase in milli, just proposed, that is correct.
So, uh, they listening, you know, we, we putting it on the table, and we got people listening and trying to help us. So, and, and I think this is what, this right here, the department, are listening and trying to help us. And I hope we can go back someday and reward them, maybe give them a little raise. We'll get back to, yeah, we're back, back there, our sheriff's report, anybody else got any questions about your sheriff's report?
Okay, everything that you had to change down here remained the same, or some here, that's what you said, or what are you saying?
The only change that I did not make, I believe, was training. After Mickey and I talked, he, he requested that the training remain at the twenty-five thousand. But I think he agreed to the rest of the changes.
I disagree, I think he should put a little bit, I think he can, I think he can kind of get a little bit. I'll, whether, I don't know, I mean.
Bullet to bullet, whatever's right.
That is so correct, even this is good.
Where, um, I know I have talked to, uh, Chief of Police, Clinton, about how that eight hundred right here, he just says they're, they're trying to move away from, and I think he talked with you, Sheriff, is there a possibility of all departments moving away from that or not?
I, I have spoken with the chief down there about that before, because of some of the coverage and fees that's involved in it.
Right.
And I've certainly told him that, you know, we would certainly entertain whatever, you know.
I have talked to him a long time about it.
Uh, which that would be a lot of other agencies involved, you know, as far as.
That's true. Emergency affairs and all that. How about the vehicle supplies, vehicle maintenance? It appears to be, I mean, I understand those vehicles are road hard, you know, I, I, I get it. Speaking of, you know, I wasn't in support of it, how are those Tahoe's holding out?
They're, they're actually, I don't think we've had a couple of less problems with them than, than some of our other vehicles, they're, they're pretty stout to do with, uh, with, with the sheriff's office does, as far as the roads and absorb some of the areas they have to go.
How about fuel? Looks like we're going to go over this year, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, with the gas, you know, up and down, I mean. It didn't amount to being, you know.
It didn't bound me, it was, you know... Like some of our road guys, they fill it up once a day, you know, three hundred some miles trolling in the shield.
They sit sometime too. They're parked sometime also.
Just there.
I've got a few questions also, with the salaries for hospital contract, what is that exactly?
Several years ago, the hospital contracted with the county for deputies to be on the premises and when Green Hospital System took over, they wanted to get out of the contract. So, that was, they were just, the hospital was reimbursing the county for part of deputy salaries or...
They were reimbursing for all of the deputy salaries they had contracted.
Well... Two deputies, but the county was paying for vehicles and stuff like that, I think it was, the county had a match in it somewhere.
Are you playing?
Yeah.
So, is the county, I mean, because I'm seeing the act, the year of date come out and then the... Of nine thousand, I'm seeing the nine thousand two hundred twenty-nine as the...
That was what we told from the contract, we do like the... We've, the sheriff's department developed a two-year, we don't take this because I'm probably going to take the meeting.
Second question with the sex offender registry, see, it was twenty-fifteen, it was up to thirteen thousand and it's also thirteen thousand, it was up to forty-nine hundred in twenty-fourteen, twenty-thirteen, what's the, what's the cause of that?
Out the car tower, administrator opened the sex offender registry.
At least you can correct it, but it, that thirteen thousand is just a number that you put in for online budget.
Correct, the... Those fees are collected and remitted to the state, so it's, there's a revenue side of it, it's a bit side of it, it washes itself. And what money they don't get off of it, they upgrade the sex offender computer maintenance equipment.
How many employees in the sheriff's office, including full-time salary and overtime, make over fifty thousand dollars a year?
I'm the only one with a base pay of over fifty, but we may have some others that went overtime, they want you to probably get close to that. But it's not probably...
I'd like to know, and I don't want to know who, I'd just like to know how many for the last fiscal year.
Over sixty thousand?
Fifty.
I'm right close to fifty, forty-eight.
What about the source supplies, what are those?
Yeah, that's our, our tactical team for flashbangs and other equipped shields and things that they do and training that they require. So, they do more shooting and more specific skills, uh, in addition to their amazing job.
That's one to respond to emergencies like a kid has and a few.
Yeah, just like the other, for example, the other night, the individual out with the gun threatening to kill himself or his wife and wouldn't give up. And the decision was made to use a beanbag round with a shotgun beanbag round to basically stunning so they could take him into custody without hurting him any worse. So, those type of things that they buy and use with us.
And also responsible for training with that for detention center, in case of a rifle, so their team has to train for that also. Is that basically our SWAT team or is that...
It is.
It is. Did they, because I've seen a couple of things here with their helmets, one, understanding they're using nine-year-old helmets currently. Is that, are those replacing those helmets in this, this captain?
Yeah.
Mickey, have you addressed the computer maintenance and what goes in that?
The computer maintenance, that's the county we use to pay for all of our repair needs for our computers, update local software, the vendors, the contracts do our work, you know.
Are those in-car computers as well?
Yes, all of our laptops and our deputies and our desktops and, yeah, of course.
How do you replace it with in-car computers?
We, I mean, last year we bought, we had twenty-five or thirty that was afforded to us by the county and we just bought it about every five years.
I'll beat that one. Wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to have a sheriff's department?
It would.
It would. Not have to have a detention center, but it fits me well, like I forgot to have it. I'll say it again, they might say they have come and moved it.
And that's, that's the point, I'm just, you know, going to respect what copy of them, that's okay. You see, you know, EMS dispatchers and everybody standing around or something like that, you know, they're not doing anything, but when you need them, they're there. Example, when you need somebody up here in the courtroom because you could, or council room now, excuse me, because you've got something impossible, violent situation, well, you know, you call us. So, we're gonna have to get somebody, we're gonna have to pay somebody over or we're gonna have to pull somebody off a ship or somebody else. So, those things add up over a year's time. I guess what's it, because we can critique it all the death, but when you need somebody or when your wife's been held hostage by somebody, overtime don't matter, it don't matter that the people are all... You want everybody that you can to be there to protect that family and that's, that's where public safety in general runs into the quad mark, you know, when man's missing. You know, if it was my daddy in the woods, I wouldn't care for costs of a million dollars. I want everybody that you can afford to be down there, but yeah, I still want my property protected at the same time while you're down here. I understand, but that's where it comes in.
I think everybody else thinks the same way. If I have somebody missing in my family, I want everybody else to get it.
Another concern with the sheriff's department is, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Lawrence County is the second or third largest land county in the state of South Carolina. They only have, when they're full, they only have six car patrol in this county. Sometimes they're parked and sometimes they have to run clean across this county five times a night. And sometimes they don't have six working.
Now, we don't appreciate all that you do, but we do like you being concerned about some of the things, because it's not the only budget within what we're working with. And so, we like everybody to be concerned about how things look, so we appreciate it.
Right, and I certainly do and I'm, you know, we're concerned.
And so, we don't have to do everything, it's on television too.
Right, we're concerned about, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I'm having a hard time hearing you, counsel.
I just said I was appreciating what you did.
Oh, okay, thank you. But, yeah, because, you know, we're one of the first in the state to get body camera stuff, because we're, there's a legitimate concern for making sure that people are treated right and the things that's going on. But, you know, sometimes if you do have six deputies, you just talk about these unfunded mandates, probate court now, you know, the Supreme Court justice saying, well, whenever probate court wants a deputy, you got to send them one. Well, that's, we don't have, you can check the position, we don't have a courtroom deputy from probate court assigned, so you have to pull somebody to go over there. And all these, these unfunded mandates that's coming from people that don't... Well, people that don't have to worry about where the money comes from, telling you, you got to do this, you got to do that, you're going to be held in contempt of court and it's, it's stressful. And we do, as the sheriff's office, as all of us, need to work to try to reduce it. And I, from the last meeting, the budget that we made, I've spoken with the captains and all about trying to get the overtime down, looking at some other things to do, whatever we can do to curb it. We're going to try to and I'm, and I'm holding responsible for it, I've told them as well to try to do all we can to help.
One question, Ricky.
Yes.
This is curious, crack metal, twenty-eight hundred, and the budget, actual, before tables, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. Budget request is twenty-eight, what is the profit?
That's actually money that, correct me, that we're generating and getting, putting back for when people come to buy a permit, this is another thing that the state did. If you go to get a scrap metal permit to sell your scrap metal and stuff, so this is the fee, this is money that we collect, so that's washing out in there. That's actually a revenue, just coming in.
Well, that's somebody buying.
No, so that's just a citizen coming off the street.
It's the, it's the dealers, the scrap, the dealers that take in the non-bearish metals, the recyclers, they pay us a, for a permit to take in the metal. And then we also, the people that sell it like normal citizens, they have to obtain a permit to, I guess, sell the non-bearish metal to the recycler and then transport. So, we, we're not required to, I guess, charge a fee for a permit, but there's fees for like reprints or other copies of stuff that are, that charge, has to go back when it comes in.
I understand, I'm, I'm curious, I know all about scrap metal recycling. I must know how I came into the police.
Now, that permit fee, does that cover your administration dollars?
No, we, we had to, I guess, go to look, add-in duties.
Yeah, I'm on it.
Take care of that. But we, we use some of that money to, you know, purchase equipment to, to set some of the costs down. We got to keep up with all the data bases and notify people.
I mean, that's, that's called, I mean, that's called, real big.
That, but that was another beauty that's been added for somebody.
How many vehicles were in the sheriff's department?
It's a... I was talking about having our count, it's in the mid-nineties, but we're getting rid of some.
About a hundred.
A hundred, a hundred and we, we still have some that are in the process of being deadlined.
So, that's two hundred fifty thousand, try to maintain a hundred vehicles, is that right?
Yeah.
Some, some over two hundred thousand miles.
Overall, the fleet we have isn't very good shape.
And that was probably as good as it been, you know, when I first came here and Sheriff did a good job in helping us get the vehicles and appreciate y'all.
Somebody mentioned, somebody mentioned eight hundred, how about eight hundred systems, is that, is there something else that, I mean, a four hundred system worth that?
There was an older radio system and there's some other stuff that Joey may can have more information on it than I do, but we currently use the eight hundred. And it actually evolved here because of the interstate and I think back period, what was it, the hurricane or something, that we got about half a million dollars to go.
I think after, after nine eleven, interoperability amongst emergency services was key. A lot of people lost their lives in New York because they didn't talk to each other. So, we were able to get about five hundred thousand dollars grant money at no match, no, just free money to us, to try to implement interoperable communications. And that's what we've done, Lawrence City, Clinton City, Sheriff's Department, EMS, we all use those radios. And if you talk to Chief Morris, he just got a grant for mobile radios which helped his coverage area because he was working off of portables. And everybody now has mobiles and portables to work off of.
Just right. We're not fully, we're not fully.
Not fully, okay. And then what that does is, we had a major incident that came into Lawrence County, we could bring agencies in, just like when we had the missing person. We used eight hundred megahertz radios from people that came in from O'Conne, Pickens, Union, wherever. And we were able to give them a certain state provided talk group in that, so we could all communicate and that's what it's about. To put a system in like we're using now would probably be a rough estimate, minimum twenty-five million dollars. If we went away from that and we put in a, what we call a UHF or VHF, four hundred megahertz range, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a million to two million dollars. To get all the agencies part of that system. And it would be nice to do that, we'd eliminate the user fee, but trying to get the financing together to put that system, system wide is pretty difficult, so.
I think they stick, oh, yeah, when I heard that twenty-five million.
They are nice, they can actually program all the radios going down the road from a laptop so everybody can communicate on the same frequency.
Anybody got any more questions?
I was gonna go ahead and ask about the telephone and the cell phones.
She said telephone and the cell phone.
Well... I would, I would, good guessing that probably forty-five officers that help us have cell phones. Then give or take, you know, it'd be a good most. But, you know, like I said, those are used, you know, to keep radio traffic down so where if, you know, for officer safety reasons, you know, they're not tied up, they're a radio line discussing what's going on, they can use cell phones. Communicate back and forth with victims, you know, complainants or, you know, often times our guys, they ride in the road, go into a call, they'll call another call service to come in and help by telephone instead of actually a deputy going after that house, you know, so this...
But the road officers, they do have stand...
The supervisors.
Yes, the supervisors.
Supervisors and our investigative services and then, and our support services such as warrants and those type of folks, they all have cell phones.
Fond back. And the telephone.
Yeah, just basically office lines for, you know, all investigators and the fax lines and the... Those lines is often through PRTC.
We got four, four numbers, four, four numbers. Follows the intercom system, put that on that thing.
Everybody can call in on all of those four numbers?
Yeah.
Of the system.
Do y'all really still use fax machines?
Yes. All the time.
Y'all don't have scanners?
Yeah, we got scanners. We do, but people send us faxes, they say...
Listen.
Yeah, I have one other day, I said, can you email them, they said, I can't, can you fax, so we still...
Tell them you can't and you can go do it.
Telephone, text, phishing or something.
Well, we currently don't have encryption in a lot of places, so it's not really secure to travel across the lines, fax, yes. Scan an email, not secure.
That's fixing to be a big issue within the ICS too, probably.
That's probably what we heard tonight.
Yep, so, nobody else.
Yeah, I've got a conflict, I'm ever staying Friday.
Keep saying Monday, we said Monday.
What about that Tuesday? Tuesday, I work from late, five o'clock.
I may not, I may not be able to see what, what happened.
No, it was true, that Tuesday, I'm on it, I'm on it.
What about Monday, are you home on Monday?
Was that just for you?
No, it's week after.
Week after, okay.
Probably we're basically going through this, if you see any questions.
If I seen him.
You go through, or split up and make a bet?
I'll get them.
We'll get a question then.
We could have the magistrate's library first year. We've got some specific personnel requests, salary, just six people. We could maybe pull those or toss them, but there's not that many of them probably would have them, but probably, you know, they made a question, probably be fair to have them make those rest, make the rest of them. But we can, we'll work on that too, if we have all we can.
But we work on Tuesday night, getting through the rest of these, make the captain consent. What time do you?
Five.
Forty out, next Tuesday night, five o'clock.
I have to see, I have to, I have to, I have to, but I have to say, I can call in tomorrow, I'll call in tomorrow.
Well, maybe don't mind, maybe Monday or Tuesday night. You don't mind tonight?
Fighting commission needs to use.
What?
Fighting commission.
Monday be better.
I still need to say, but I think Monday will be better.
Monday afternoon, five o'clock.
Here. Mr. Chairman, I will say, as bad as I hate to, the discussion will likely probably should come up in that meeting by the local office sales staff. And I, right now, don't see any means of clout in this budget or getting close without using the board of office staff. So, with that being said, this discussion.
We're not gonna get in that next version, but I don't think you can not, you gotta have a promise, discuss what we're gonna need. We need to do that, the camp move now.
Right, very good, I guess, something, what about if, the button, I'll just, I'll talk to you, the next twenty-sixth, we're the next, I love you, that's where the camp. You being down that Monday.
Yes.
Could we potentially set a meeting for that Monday night, when you're twenty, feels like, yes, we're gonna talk to you, try to get all that work out, that is, okay with anybody? And then, I know, I know, reaching out for a week and a half, you know, that's something we shoot for anyway. But I think, I agree with Tom, so I think it's probably hard to do that without.
I just think that discussion, I think that discussion we can have, pardon.
Well, I suggest this, if we're beating that twenty-fifth, can we just have that budget workshop that thing same time?
I think.
And not meeting that Tuesday? I'm asking.
I think so.
Okay, we're working, we're going now. That's fine. I was asking.
I, I'm kind of pretty okay, about one meeting would be able to do it. You could do both in one meeting, okay.
Monday afternoon, five o'clock.
That's like the two hundred three, right?
Nothing ever.
Next Monday.
Monday, come.